Because it is stifling, it is stifling all economic development right now.
I understand, but then you get into free enterprise and other people get jealous and things happen, so I just want to make sure.
I appreciate your concern very much.
And the man that started this was named Ratliff in eighty-nine, the CDC, and they had some problems with it back in the nineties and two thousand, and were threatening to take it away from all cities across the state.
Is that Senator Ratliff?
Yeah.
Not Bud, not Bud Ratliff.
East Texas. Okay, thank you very much.
I have a question for the, for our attorney. Now, Mr. Robinson kind of brought it up too. We vote on this tonight, are we giving ODC the authority to go ahead and choose one tonight, but we're not going to know which one we're choosing, are we? Are you bringing a?
We are recommending to you to approve Community Development Strategy Code.
Okay.
It'd be a package together.
Okay.
All right, that was, that was a question I had.
Did you want to speak on the, adding the six-month renewal? Was somebody going to mention that?
One of the things that got brought up in our finance committee discussion was whether or not we would want to include in the contract the ability to ask them to review this six, nine, twelve months down the road at some point because our economy's changing quickly and it might be beneficial if we were to do that. And once they're already in and doing the study, they would obviously be the best choice to just update that information at some point in time later on.
That, that's a good idea.
Okay.
Okay. No more questions, I'll entertain a motion.
So before we do the motion, do we have to add that to the, is that included with this, or what?
I think you can just say that you, you would allow them to put that into the contract when they work the contract up with CDC.
So we're just giving directions to legal.
So that should be the motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
If that's what you wanted to do.
I don't know, maybe we need to talk about it before we make the motion.
I don't have a problem with it.
How do you feel, Philly?
I, I feel good. I mean, I, I think I answered the questions. I'm glad that Gary brought it up, so that way we could include it in there.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have, Mr. Brown made a motion, so we just need a second.
I'll do a second it.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you, Ms. Herd.
Thank you.
We are going to have to move something up. Item five of the, under public hearings, so item five is consider amending Article three dash thirteen of the City of Odessa Code of Ordinances entitled Mobile Homes and Manufactured Homes.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. The council did approve this amendment on first reading back on August the fourteenth of this year, and this amendment would reflect the adoption of minimums, all standards related to skirting, entrance areas, porch and landing system requirements associated with the permitting and location of mobile manufactured homes throughout the city of Odessa. And this is also in conjunction with a case that you'll be hearing later on related to rezoning for the location of mobile homes. And be happy to answer any specific questions.
Is there any questions for Mr. Brenly? Okay, this is not actually a public hearing for this, this is just to get this approved, so then we can approve the public hearing.
Kate, could you go over for the people what the requirements are?
Yes, ma'am. What the requirements would be was, would be if they apply for a permit to put a new mobile home, it will have to have tie-down and foundation requirements, or blocking requirements, I'm sorry. The mobile home would have to meet the HUD code manufactured requirements, skirting with the appearance of one of the following: brick, poured concrete, block cement, wooden material, finished metal with aesthetic structural continuity. You would have to have entrance areas both for the front and the rear, which is basically a porch with permanent top steps, and a landing system that would include wooden accents with column posts and also handrails for any type of stair and entrance systems.
Now, does everybody have to run out and do that right now?
No, ma'am, that's, this is just for getting a permit to do it, it's not retroactive to existing mobile homes.
Okay, so then we do have people that are grandfathered?
Yes, ma'am. This is just for new permits that are being issued.
Now suppose I have a mobile home right here on this lot, and I move it, can someone else come in and, because they're taking my space, be grandfathered?
Yes, ma'am. Under the, the aspects of grandfather law, you have a time period where you can replace that mobile home and not lose your continuity with what the law requires.
Really? I was hoping you wouldn't say that. That isn't why I want to hear it.
I had to say that.
Okay. What is that time period?
Uh, six months.
Okay.
Okay, any more discussion? Not, I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
And motion and second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Now we move back to item two. We'll open a public hearing to consider the approval of the request by the City of Odessa to rezone from general residential and mobile home to single-family. Mr. Brenly.
Yes, sir. Related to this case, the city mailed out fourteen hundred and twenty-five notices. We had nineteen of these notices returned, we did receive three protests, we did receive written approvals, approximately thirty of those, and as a staff, we did receive over fifty phone calls in support of this request. The council did approve the request on first reading on August the fourteenth of this year. The properties involved in the request are located in the south-central and southeast part of the city of Odessa. They are between South Crane Avenue and Barrett to the east and west, and also to the north and south, they're between Ada Street and Pool Road. These properties are currently zoned general residential and mobile home, and they are occupied by single-family residential development, mobile home development, and vacant land. Land use in this general area ranges from single-family residential and mobile home development to retail and commercial development, and also does constitute industrial development. The applicant in this case is the city of Odessa, and the purpose of the rezoning request to single-family three is to facilitate a coordinated effort by the District One City Council representative and the city of Odessa to preserve the character and residential integrity of the neighborhoods, and also promote additional single-family residential development in this area. These areas are located in the southern area of the city of Odessa's future land use map. This area is generally considered one of the prime areas of established residential development in Odessa. The proposed zoning and land uses for these areas is consistent with the identified city priority of reinvigorated neighborhoods through infill residential development and a diverse range of housing. The proposed zoning and land use is intended to provide revitalized neighborhoods that would maintain long-term value through quality building materials, housing maintenance, exterior upkeep, and compatible adjacent development. The proposed zoning is reasonable, is a reasonable request, and will promote a revitalized development in the area. Existing uses and structures will not be affected by this request through the principle of legal nonconformity, and the Planning and Zoning Commission did approve this request to single-family three residential development, and the planning staff does concur with this recommendation for approval, and be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, are there any questions? Okay, this is a public hearing, so at this time I will open up the floor for anyone who'd like to comment on this agenda item. If you would, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. And the motion passes. Item three, we'll open a public hearing to consider the approval of the request of D.R. Horton. Mr. Brenly.
Yes, sir. The city council did approve this request on first reading on August the fourteenth of this year. The property involved in this request is located southeast corner of Longfellow Ranch Road and Kate Reed Drive. This site is currently designated special dwelling district surface drainage. It is vacant, and land use in the area does consist of vacant land. The applicant and owner in this case is D.R. Horton, LCA is their agent, and the purpose of this request is create one lot for residential development. Documentation related to the release of the detention basin has been provided by Public Works. This area is located in the northeast area of the city's future land use map. This area is generally considered one of the prime areas for new residential growth in Odessa. The zoning requested for this site and the proposed development's design is consistent with the city's priority for attractive, safe, and connected roadways and neighborhoods with the intended land use context taken into consideration. The Planning and Zoning Commission did give unanimous approval to this zoning. The planning staff does concur with this recommendation, and I believe, Ms. Graff, at the last meeting, you did have a question related to the drainage. That has all been taken into account, everything has worked out, and it will not be an issue.
Right, and I, I would like for you to explain that to the people here tonight, because I don't want anyone leaving here and saying, "Oh, my gosh, that council approved putting a house in a drainage area." So if you would just explain that quickly.
Yes, ma'am. What happened here, this lot was never intended to be in the drainage area, it was not in there, it inadvertently got put in the drainage area when the zoning was requested, and it was designated as surface drainage. And what this request does is just correct that error and take that SD designation off so it can be developed as a house. So it was never in that drainage area.
Right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Are there any questions? Mr. Brenly? Okay, this is a public hearing, so at this time I will open up the floor for anyone who'd like to comment on this agenda item. If you would, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. And the motion passes. Move to item four. Open a public hearing to consider the approval of the request by the P-Bar Parks Bell and Twenty Twelve Cross B LLC. Mr. Brenly.
Yes, sir. The property involved in this request is located in the vicinity of the proposed Yukon Road and Aaron Parker Road. These two sites are designated future development and future development drill reservation. These sites are currently vacant. The applicants in the case are P-Bar Parks Bell Ranch and Twenty Twelve Cross B. They are the owners of the property, and LCA is the representative in this case. And the purpose of this original zoning and the rezoning request to special dwelling district would facilitate single-family residential development and related uses on this property. The staff has received documentation related to the release of the drill reservation, and when the property is completely developed out, what we've anticipated is approximately five hundred new residential lots in this area. We have not received any formal request for plating or any type of specific design on this property as of yet. This area is located in the northeast area of the city's future land use map. This area is generally considered one of the prime areas for new residential growth in Odessa. The zoning requested for the site is, and the proposed design would be consistent with the city's priority for attractive, safe, and connected roadways and neighborhoods, and this would take into account the intended land uses. The Planning and Zoning Commission did give unanimous approval to this request, and planning staff does concur with this recommendation for approval. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, are there any questions for Mr. Brenly?
Is anyone from the Parks Bell group here?
Their representative is here, yes, ma'am.
He thought you were going to get out of coming up, didn't he?
Yeah, you should have known you couldn't do that.
Good evening, John Langgraf, five twenty-one, North Texas.
John, I can't let this go by without saying something.
Okay.
I have no idea what type of housing or what they're going to put there, but I would like to have a bee put in their ear, nose, pocket, whatever, that perhaps they could consider workforce, workforce housing. Our policemen, our firemen, our utilities workers, our teachers, our nurses need workforce housing, so would you please deliver that message to them that, I'm sure they've heard about it, but I just want to say one more time, hey, think about it, please.
Well, it, it is going to be, D.R. Horton has this property under contract, and Parks Bell people are just getting it zoned. Their contract, I believe, says that they close on this after the first of the year, so this will be just another phase of the D.R. Horton stuff, which I think fits into what you're, what you're talking about. The predominant, the large piece, the little square to the, to the west and south.
Right.
That, that little piece is still owned by the Parks Bell family and their family partnership, and they, they plan to develop it residential, and they've not committed toward this, but the ninety-something acres is all D.R. Horton.
Okay, well, maybe you can just put that bug in their ear too.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much, John.
Thank you, no problem.
Are there any more questions?
I think of anything, Mr. Langgraf, I'd like you to kind of help us out in regards to the, the building that's going on right now. There are probably how many houses starting every day? There, there are contracts in place for, or people on the list for well over twelve to eighteen months, so we are doing our best, I believe, in regards to those that are working for this city in regards to building, et cetera, to provide housing to those that can.
It's, it's absolutely phenomenal to me. I've, I've been doing this for thirty-nine years, and I've never seen anything like this in Odessa before. We've got two huge home builders and many others in between. D.R. Horton is closing one house a day, every day. They, that's a close, a little over, a little less than three hundred and fifty houses a year, and they're trying to figure out a way to ramp up, bringing labor in here to do that is, is obviously a, a big problem that we all know and understand. I don't work directly for Beaton Bow, but I understand they're about on that same pace, and then you fill in with Silverleaf and, and the other people that are, that are building. We're, we're, we're actually selling and opening up about two and a half new houses every day in Odessa, Texas. Now, that doesn't count the big apartment complexes that are in the works and all the other things that we're trying to do on housing. I've told this to many people, and y'all understand this, you can't catch up in the boom. That, that's the problem. We're trying to catch up in, in a boom, and it's, it's hard to do.
One thing I want to make sure is pointed out, though, is Vanessa, Mr. Brenly, and the group that are giving the permits, that are doing the things as far as inspections, they're going as fast and furious as they can to get them done.
And we, we have very little problem with.
I mean, and, and that's phenomenal.
With that.
Doing at least one a day, two a day, that's just counting two of the larger ones.
Yes.
So I think it, in its all entirety, that we need to make sure we recognize them, and as well as those that are entrepreneurs out there that are building as fast as they can.
And, and they're trying, and they're trying to do more, it's just they can't quite get the workload in here, you know, the, the framers and the roofers and the carpenters, and everybody here is completely busy. And if you go to D.R. Horton Sunday afternoon, there are just as many people working on houses as there were on Friday afternoon or Tuesday morning. I mean, it's, it's a phenomenal process that, that they have to, to be able to produce the type of homes, homes that they are, and thank goodness we had, had that Parks Bell property open and available, you know, for that. And thank you for your considerations, I know they all appreciate it.
Attorney, any more questions?
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, so at this time I will open up the floor for anyone who'd like to comment on this non-agenda item, I'm sorry, on this agenda item. Seeing none, we're going to close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion, second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Brenly. Item six, open the first public hearing on the proposed tax rate and to consider levying the tax for the two thousand and eighteen tax year. Ms. Muncy.
Yes, counsel, this is to open the first public hearing on our proposed tax rate. Property Tax Code Section twenty-six oh six requires two public hearings. If a tax rate is proposed that exceeds the effective tax rate, the proposed tax rate of forty-seven point six six oh one cents exceeds the effective tax rate and will increase total property tax revenues by nine point six two percent over the preceding year. The second public hearing will be held on September eleventh, two thousand and eighteen, scheduled, at our scheduled city council meeting. The proposed tax rate provides for the continuation of the twenty percent general residential homestead exemption, the senior citizen exemption of fifteen thousand, the five thousand to twelve thousand disabled veteran exemption, the five thousand exemption for disabled persons, and other state mandated exemptions, all of which have been included in the calculation of total taxable values for the two thousand and nineteen fiscal year. All exemptions for the fiscal year amount to one point nine million dollars. In a comparison, I need to tell you that our adoptive tax rate for last year was point four nine three two four eight, or forty-nine point three two four eight cents. The effective tax rate calculation was forty-five point oh seven nine one cents, and we are proposing a rate of forty-seven point six six oh one cents, and this is just under the, the rollback rate of point four seven six six oh two. The two thousand and eighteen tax year taxable value for the city of Odessa is eight billion two forty-two four seventy-six oh forty-eight, and this is an increase of ten point nine nine cents per, over the preceding year. Okay? So we are actually reducing our tax rate from the prior year by one point six six cents.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Muncy?
What, one more time, what was the total exemptions? Is it the total exemptions?
One point nine million.
Million?
Yes.
And that's for the over sixty-five and?
It includes homesteads, over sixty-five, disabled veterans, disabled people, residential caps, all of those things, yes.
Okay, any other questions? This is a public hearing, so at this time I will open up the floor for anyone who'd like to come up and comment on this agenda item. If you would, please come forward. Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close this public hearing. And item seven, we'll open a public hearing for the fiscal two thousand and eighteen annual budget. Ms. Muncy.
You know, Cindy, before you start, I just want to say thank you. You are doing such an absolute excellent job with our finances. You make it easy to follow, easy to understand, and it's very obvious you spend a lot of time with it, and I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay, floor's yours.
Okay, this is to open the public hearing for the fiscal year two thousand and eighteen nineteen annual budget. So we are, we discussed this in our budget workshop on July the twenty-fourth. This was filed with the city secretary's office on August thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen. We are proposing a total of two hundred and twenty-three million in revenues for all funds. We are proposing two hundred and sixteen million in expenditures for all funds. This does include the three percent salary increase for employees and an amount set aside for our salary survey and any additional compensation that might be needed as a result of that. I'm open to any, the majority of our increase in revenues, we had an increase over last year's revenues of five point six six percent, or eleven point nine million. The biggest part of that is in general fund, of course, with our sales tax increase of six point four and our property tax increase. We also had a little bit of an increase in our water sewer projected revenues and a little bit in our hotel tax. Our projected expenditures are nine point two million greater than last year, that's a four point four seven percent increase. Again, about seven million of that is in general fund. So I will answer any questions, and this is.
Are there any questions?
It's not a question, but it's a, a request. TML has asked us to please have our finance director tell us what it would do to our budget if the legislature capped us at two percent and then at three percent. Could you possibly work that up before our next meeting? I think it would be very interesting for all of our citizens and for the council to see what, what a cap on property taxes would do.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, well, this is a public hearing, so I will open up the floor again for anyone who'd like to come forward and comment. If you would, please come forward. Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and we'll move to resolution. Item eight, consider authorizing to proceed with annexation of industrial districts two, three, four, and Black Gold Industrial District. Mr. Landers.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. Philip is putting a couple of maps up. Can you put the other one up first? This is just to start the process, you know, when cities want to consider the possibility of adding land to the city limits, annexation, there's a process you have to go through, and so this starts that tonight. This first slide shows you the gray area are the actual city limits of Odessa. And usually when I've seen maps like this, all the industrial districts are colored in, so you get kind of a, it looks like the city's different shape than it actually is. So the gray is the city, and then across that southern line, really between Business Eighty and Interstate Twenty, you see some kind of large chunks of white area that aren't in the city. Those are the three main industrial district areas that we're starting the possibility of annexing tonight. And then there's one further in the northwest, a very small industrial district. Now, if you can go to the next slide. Additionally, we will be able to add in, as we get all the remaining paperwork, we need some, probably four, perhaps five voluntary requests for annexation by much smaller tracks. So on this map, you're looking at now the orange areas are the areas that are being proposed for annexation at this point. And again, this is a long process, the final vote would probably not be until sometime in November, so plenty of time for people to raise their pros and cons, but you'll see these are those industrial district areas plus some adjacent areas where we're picking up roadways that connect those areas. Some of these are roadways coming into the city that are kind of the entrance ways that the council has talked about in the past. Significantly, all of these are in the, are, all of the parcels that are in the process we're beginning tonight are in Hector County, and they're, the majority are actually south of Business Eighty. They're specifically adjacent to city council districts one, two, five, and three. And so those are presumably the, the districts where these lands would be added into if the annexation goes forward. There's also a couple of areas on here that are actually owned by the city, so we're, we're requesting annexation so we can help out that boundary line. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions.
Any questions?
So district, I mean, that, that orange part number four, right? That's, if we annex that, what part of the district is that going to be? One or five?
Well, that's what you will decide during this, these coming months. It's, it's a kind of adjacent to both. Most of it is adjacent to five, but there is a portion of it that is adjacent to one. You can see it's probably going out a, a lot further, but that, that's part of the details that would need to be worked out as we work through this process. The staff will also present to you information on how services would be provided to all of these areas as we go through the process.
Okay, other questions?
You know, we started talking about this, what, four, five, six years ago? How long ago was it? And I, I know each time I would request, have you talked to the business owners? Have we let the business owners know what's going on, what this means, what they have to do? And to my knowledge, everybody has been personally talked to, correct?
Well, we're beginning the process.
We, we have talked to some of them, some of these industrial districts have a significant number of individual landowners inside. They've been notified, but this process will begin the next official notification. They've been notified, but this process will begin the next official notification for that. And they, they would all receive, if not a personal phone call, a letter telling them. It would be, it'll be difficult to have a personal conversation with all of these owners, particularly some of those.
But they have received either a phone call or a letter?
They will, if, and subject to you taking this first vote tonight, authorizing the staff to proceed, that is part of the process that we'll go through.
I know a lot of our larger companies, we went out personally and looked at the property and talked to them, and so.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I know the larger companies have been notified personally.
Okay. Mr. Bryant, you had a question?
I think it's very, very important that, that also that we have a bullet point, we as council people have a bullet point as to the differences of, of being included in the annexation and being a, and it remain as an industrial district. I know there's an awful, awful of concerns from the previous past of buildings having to be considered under new codes or whatever. So.
Yes, sir.
I think it's extremely important that the facts be in a bullet point type presentation to where if y'all don't get the phone calls, we are, so at least we can, we can at least answer appropriately.
We'll prepare that for you.
And as I mentioned, the biggest, the biggest thing is, is that a lot of the buildings, et cetera, I mean, are there going to be different things that are going to happen to them, et cetera, et cetera? So if we could include it, I'd appreciate it.
Good idea. Okay, any other questions?
What is the timeline for this? So we start it today?
We, we start it today, and as, as we go through that, it'll be the, towards the end of November before you'd have the final vote. And, and that, this, we have to start today in order to have the possibility of completing it so that these properties could be part of the city on January 1st, 2019.
So their contracts that existing expire before the end of the year?
Yes. The, on these three largest ones, they had an original contract which expired. The council granted them an extension. That additional extension has expired then, I believe it was last year, the council granted a third extension for an additional year, and that's the year we're in now. So these all expire then December 31st, 2018.
Well, you know, the thing that I found was very interesting with a lot, with a lot of the larger companies, the things that they were so concerned about, really, when we sent our staff out to look, was no concern, and things that they had never thought about were the concern, so.
We, kind of along that line, we're, we're currently talking with two developers who will probably do an industrial district right now, just so that they can work with the staff and keep moving over the next three months. But they've both agreed to be annexed, to be added to this annexation. They, but they just need the benefit now. They don't want to wait until January to get the city approvals of.
I understand that. Okay, any other questions? If not, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. We do not have any appointments to boards or appointment of officers. I have received no more cards for citizens' comments on non-agenda items, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, you can stay here.